I'd like to begin the regular meeting of Board of Trustees and call to order on June 22, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Clerk Seacrest, can you please take roll call?
Borninsky.
Here in Canton Township.
Foster.
Good evening, I'm here from Canton Township.
Ganguly.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening, here in Canton Township Hall.
Seacrest is in attendance. Canton Slavens.
Good evening, from Canton Township.
Anne Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a Pride Resolution and item G0, which is consider approval for the emergency PO for the ground repair of Katie Boyer Barn at Preservation Park.
Madam, so moved?
Support.
You can clerk Seacrest, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seacrest, I. Slavens.
Hi.
Anne Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes for June 8th and 15th, 2021?
So moved?
Support.
Clerk Seacrest, please take a roll call on the motion.
Snyderman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can do it backwards.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Slavens.
Hi.
Seacrest, I. Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Oh, great, thank you. Now we have a public comment. So I'm going to the attendees, is there any public comment? You can raise your hand. I don't see any phones to dial star 67. Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, so we don't have, I don't see any hands. Great, thank you. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Clerk Seacrest, please take a roll call on the motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who the support was for that.
Or Mia or Tanya.
Okay. Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seacrest, I. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
All right, thank you. So before we start the present presentation, I'd like to have Stephen Snyderman is going to read the Pride Resolution into record.
All right, thank you, it's my honor. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan. A resolution to declare June 2021 as Pride Month in Canton Township. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT people are our family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who contribute meaningfully to our community, whereas LGBT Pride events are held in June to commemorate the June 28, 1969 Stonewall riots that were also a catalyst for establishing safe places for LGBT folks to be open about their sexual orientation and gender identity without fear of being arrested or jailed. Whereas the fight for dignity, equality, and inclusion for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people has been hard fought in the streets and in the courts of this country. Whereas these fights for inclusion have made much progress towards changing the hearts and minds of people in many parts of the world. Whereas on June 13, 2014, Canton Township added a new chapter 36 to the Canton Township Municipal Code related to sustaining a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community for all regardless, for all residents regardless of race, religion, color, national origin, sex, age, HIV status, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Whereas on June 24, 2014, Canton Township passed a resolution calling on the Michigan State Legislature to amend the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to provide protections for LGBT Michiganders. Whereas in 2018, Canton Leisure Services launched the You Belong Here Initiative as a part of the commitment to honoring diversity, inclusion, and equity while remaining dedicated to a mission that promotes a spirit of mutual respect, feelings of belonging, and a greater sense of community for all of our neighbors. Whereas in 2019, Canton Township will be supporting, did support the first annual Canton Pride Festival. The Canton Pride Festival will be sponsored by the PFLAG Plymouth Canton, the PCAP Gender and Sexuality Alliance, the Ruth Ellis Center, and In the Band Music Appreciation Studio, and was hosted by Canton's Township Village Theater. Whereas Canton Pride Outside Event will be held on Friday, July 9, 2021 from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at Heritage Park Amphitheater. Pride Outside will be a free event where everyone is welcome. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township Board of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby proclaim June 2021 as Pride Month in Canton Township to celebrate lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender members of our community and as an affirmation of the township's commitment to protect and serve everyone who resides in, works in, or visits Canton without discrimination, as well its belief in the dignity, equality, and constitutional and civil rights of all people. Be it further resolved that the Canton Township Board of Trustees reaffirms its resolution passed in 2014, calling for immediate action by the Michigan Legislature and Governor to introduce, adopt, and enroll with immediate effect legislation providing for real protection against discrimination of all residents of the state by amending the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to include protection for physical or mental limitation, disability, source of income, family responsibilities, educational association, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, or HIV status. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the Charter Township of Canton is directed to submit a copy of this resolution to the Office of the Governor, Senate Majority and Minority Leaders, and the House Speaker and Minority Leader.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
That needs a second?
Core.
Second.
Okay. And thanks to Summer Foster for putting that together for us.
Thank you. Clerk Seacrest, can you take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seacrest, I. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion approved. Great resolution. And remember, as he had said, we are going to have a Pride event that's part of it on July 9. So the next item on the agenda is our presentation, our 2020 Audit Presentation, which is led by Wendy Trumbull.
Good evening. On the call tonight is our audit partner from Plant Moran, Alicia Watkins, and the manager from Plant Moran, Keith Shemansky. So in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to them to really do the presentation. They, you know, it is basically their materials that they're going to go over from here. But I also want to thank the staff. So Finance Department does a really good job, from my opinion anyways, from my standpoint, getting everything prepared for the audit. Sarah and Carolyn really handle everything. Sarah comes in, you know, very wee hours of the morning during the audit to make sure everything goes as smoothly as possible during those few weeks that they're doing their work. And we've had a great team with no findings in the past few years, and I'm just, I'm really grateful for the team effort that the Finance Department works together to really do a great audit to get the information pulled together. So I really want to thank Sarah and Carolyn for all their hard work on doing that because they really are the ones who do the work. I get to take some of the credit for it, but they are the ones who do the heavy lifting on that, so thank you to them. But I'm going to turn it over to Alicia. I know they're going to need to share screen, so Emery Supervisor, if you don't mind allowing them access to share for the presentation, that would be great. With that, I will turn it over to Alicia.
Thank you, Wendy. If we could give Keith permission to share, he'll go ahead and share his screen. And we'll dive right in, although I was sitting here thinking, wow, that resolution is going to be really hard to follow with discussions about an audit. So, you know, we'll move forward here, but I want to acknowledge that. So the, you know, as Wendy said, you know, a lot of work goes into completing an audit. And, you know, an interesting tidbit about our township audit experience is that this is actually the second year in a row that we've done an audit through the pandemic and entirely remotely. So last year, you know, our team and your team had virtually no time to plan for it. Everything just changed overnight. And this year, fortunately, we had time to plan and work out a lot of the wrinkles. And I think, you know, as a result, we're able to have a kind of a better remote experience on both sides. But certainly, as Wendy alluded to, no less work. So we also want to thank the Township Finance Team, Wendy yourself, as well as Sarah and Carolyn for just, you know, the partnership, the collaboration, the assistance, the professionalism extended to our team during that time. I mean, after spending a significant amount of time, several months, closing the books and records, getting ready for the audit, the team then has to deal with our team for the better part of a month, actually digging into the books and records. So we appreciate that. Just, you know, a reminder of the scope of our audit work. So we do complete basically two audits at the same time. The audit of the township's financial statements, as well as the audit of the expenditures of federal awards that are received by the township. And, you know, I am happy to report once again that on both of those audits, the township received an unmodified opinion. And that really means that the opinion that we're able to provide you on your books and records, on the accounting and reporting and spending of your federal awards is really without exception. It really is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to you. And, you know, frankly, as a governing body, it's what you should expect from your team, and it lets the readers and users of your financial reports know that they can, in fact, be relied upon and that they're in compliance with all the relevant rules and regulations. In addition to being able to issue an unmodified opinion, as Wendy noted, you know, it's been a couple of years now that we've been able to come before the board and share that you had no findings. And, you know, that's not easy to come by, you know, where there's, you know, no adjustments or corrections identified by the auditors, no internal control issues. I mean, we just didn't have any of those things, and we haven't for a couple of years. And when you think about the magnitude of the transactions and data prosperous by your team, thousands and thousands, right, year round, it's not typical that you would have such a clean audit with no findings by the auditor. So the fact that your team's done that, not just this year, but a few years in a row, is quite tremendous. And so I really do congratulate the team for a tremendous audit outcome. I do want to note that for the single audit, we would normally, you know, for the past several years anyhow, we have, our major audit program has been CDBG, that in past years has been the township's largest federal expenditure on the federal grants that you received. And of course, this year has been quite different, or 2020, since we're kind of looking back here, was different for many communities, township included. And since you did receive such significant grant dollars from the coronavirus relief programs, you know, over 2 million that were expended and recognized in 2020, that is the program that we focused on this year. And again, no issues or exceptions there. In terms of what you would have received in your package this evening, what we call our, you know, the deliverables. So I believe you've received the full annual comprehensive financial report, you know, all that data, it's a huge report with a lot of really great information in it, that really is compiled by your team. The only part of that that is Plant Moran's is the audit opinion, which is a page or two that I talked about earlier. In addition, there's a federal awards report included, which is just kind of the overview of the grant audits. We do have, we are required to issue communication to the governing body at the end of our audit, similar to what we did at the beginning of the audit. It kind of wraps up that periodic communication, here's our plan, here's the rest, and then we have to issue a letter to say, hey, here's how it went. So if you had a chance to look at that letter in your board package, you probably noticed there wasn't a lot in it, pretty similar to what it was last year. That's a good thing. We really didn't have any exceptions, like I said. And so we weren't really going to spend time on that communication, but at least wanted to mention it. And certainly, if any members of the board did review it and have questions, we'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, we'll just leave that with you for your reference and really just spend our time on the graph presentation that Keith has up here. Okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead then and turn it over to Keith, and he'll walk us through some of the financial highlights from the township's 2020 financial year.
All right, thanks, Alicia. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with a few slides related to the general fund, looking at some of the trends compared to recent years. But overall, you'll see that as a result of the pandemic, both revenue and expenses were down in the general fund, but the general fund did once again add to its fund balance, and it increased total fund balance in the fund. So how they got there, start with this first slide with a five-year history of general fund revenue. The total of just under $28 million was down about 8% from a year ago. The majority of that decrease you might see relates to recreation revenue, which was down about $1 million as that program was essentially shut down after the start of the pandemic. License and permit revenue was also down slightly, but still greater than the budget by more than half a million dollars. The largest revenue source, the state sources, is largely state shared revenue, makes up about 30% of the total and was comparable to 2019. Property taxes are just a little bit smaller, they make up 28% of the total, and total property tax revenue for the general fund was up about 12% compared to 2019. That's partially due to increases in taxable value throughout the township, as well as a slight increase in the mileage rate for 2020. The next slide, we've got a chart illustrating the timing of property tax increases. So really, the main takeaway here is the lag from actual market events until that ultimately hits the township's revenue. So if you were to focus on the third column from the right, the 1231 2020 column, the fiscal year that we audited, you see that the first row indicates that the assessment date was the end of 2018, which was actually based on sales that took place over the previous year or two, so potentially going back to the beginning of 2017. But based on those assessments, the levy was December of 2019, that's when the tax bills went out. They were paid from the end of 2019 and early 2020. And then it was the revenue recognized for fiscal year 2020, the big year under audit. And so in addition to the time lag that you can see there, you can also see that, you know, the first few years we've shown here, there were some fairly modest increases in taxable value. But now 2021 is going to be the fourth straight year of approximately 5% increases. So again, that's a combination of increases in value for the existing properties, as well as new development throughout the township. And then here we have a more historical chart of taxable value throughout the township, going back to before the recession of 2008 to 2010. So in those first five years, township lost 20% of its taxable value, but has since gained it all back in the last eight years. And not only that, but current taxable value of almost $4.5 billion exceeds the pre-pandemic levels. So that is noteworthy, it really wouldn't be possible without new development throughout the township. So communities that are more built out, that don't have the significant new development, are still finding themselves around or still below the pre-recession taxable values. I previously mentioned that state shared revenue is the largest revenue source for the general fund, and here we see a 15-year history of that revenue source. And while the majority of the revenue sharing is that constitutional portion on a whole that's driven by statewide sales tax receipts, but the portion that Canton Township receives is also based on a factor of its population compared to the state's population. So because of that, you can see a very large increase from 2010 to 2011, when the 2010 census was first factored in. And now the state's projecting another large increase for the fiscal year 2021, when the 2020 census is still going to be factored in. So there's still some more information to come in terms of exactly when they're going to factor those into payments, and if it'll be retroactive to a certain period. But based on the current projections on the state website, the township is expecting about an 11% increase in this revenue source. Now looking at the expenditure side of the general fund activity, again, we're looking at a five-year history, but the $24 million total in 2020 is a decrease of about 13% compared to 2019. That decrease really is spread across each of the categories shown, but some of the large decreases are, again, in recreation, as that program was shut down for the majority of the year. There's also a decrease in the discretionary pension contributions within the general government category, and less capital outlay in 2020 compared to the previous year. So when we factor in the total revenue compared to the total expenditures, there was an overall increase in general fund fund balance. However, the majority of that was actually an increase in the fund balance category of assigned. So those assignments represent amounts that are not legally restricted in terms of how they can be spent, but the township has indicated that they are basically earmarking them for future budgeted spending, capital purchases, as well as pre-funding the legacy costs. So as a result of those assignments going up, the unassigned fund balance remained relatively flat, decreased slightly to about $5.3 million, but that still represents about 22% of the last year's expenditure. So that indicates that the township has maintained a healthy amount of unassigned fund balance on hand. And so it gives you the flexibility for those future assignments, as well as any other operations, initiatives, or emergencies that might arise going into the future. Now switching gears a little bit away from the general fund and more from the township-wide perspective, here we have a graph showing the last seven years of pension contributions. And you can see for the last three years in particular, they've been a bit elevated compared to the previous year. So in 2018, 2019, and 2020, the township made contributions in excess of the amount calculated as being required by the actuary. Of course, the big amount was in 2019, when the township contributed $8.7 million more than was required. And in 2020, the contributions of $6.9 million were very close to $1 million more than what was required. So that shows the township's efforts towards improving the funded status of its pension plan. We have that illustrated here. On the next graph, we have both the net liability of the pension, as well as the OPEB or retiree healthcare plan. So starting with the pension plan on the right, the plan overall is 68% funded, which means the assets set aside in the trust represent 68% of the total liability estimated by the actuary. So the $47 million is the net liability when factoring in those assets. And here we show it broken down between the general, police, fire, and water and sewer functions. So you can see the police portion of the liability is roughly half, and another third represents the fire portion. Then on the left-hand side, we have the total OPEB liability of about $34 million, and that plan is 44% funded. And the breakout shown as well, here, there's a larger portion allocated to the general employees. So overall, the combined unfunded liability between these two plans is over $80 million, so it does show a significant obligation that the township will face in the future. But it's important to note the very long-term nature of these obligations. So they're not going to become due all in one year, all at once, but the township does need to continue to keep an eye and monitor the funded status, and to the extent possible, continue to make the discretionary contributions to improve the funded status. But it is noteworthy that the state has recently set thresholds for what they consider to be underfunded status. That would be 60% for a pension plan and 40% for an OPEB plan, and both of the township plans are in excess of those amounts. So neither is considered underfunded by the state's guidance. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Alicia for some wrap-up commentary on the year as a whole.
Sure. And I would, you know, maybe add that, you know, that the state has set those metrics. You know, I'd say on the pension side, what we've probably seen here for most of our communities, including Canton, is, you know, 60% isn't good enough for pension. You know, most folks are trying for something higher, but it just means that if you're above that 60%, you don't have to have a plan on file that you're working, you know, with the state on. So it doesn't mean that there's not room to continue to work at, you know, bridging the gap on the unfunded status. So which is what you, as a community, have been doing for the past several years. So, you know, kind of, we like to wrap up our discussion with the board each year and just talk a little bit about kind of what does this all mean in terms of the financial condition of the township, and, you know, thinking about the road ahead. And then, you know, of course, over the past, you know, year and a half almost now, also maybe talking a little bit about the pandemic and what that's meant for local communities here in Michigan. So, you know, in terms of where the township's at, you know, going into the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic, as we're looking back at the end of your 2020 year, I mean, the story really is the same despite sort of the volatility and disruption that you've experienced. You came into the pandemic strong, as we would expect. You made some decisions to mitigate that volatility, some of the lost revenue, the disruption you're experiencing, so that you could maintain your healthy financial condition in the way that you have in the past. And so you achieved just that. And so that gets paid off, you know, the ongoing practices that you've instilled at the township, looking ahead several years and being able to plan in advance, you know, the long-term budgeting, that's continued to pay off. As Keith talked about, one of the real benefits that you've experienced in the township that really isn't the case for many local communities is just tremendous, you know, development that has enabled your tax base to grow, you know, year over year, well beyond inflation, and well beyond, frankly, what many communities experience. So that's really positive in terms of the return for the township. And then in doing all that, you know, as we just talked about, you continue to position yourself to incrementally address all these issues. You know, the unfunding legacy cost that we spoke of a little bit earlier, you know, some of the capital items that you've deferred now for several years and are finally starting to get into, being able to set funds aside, in addition to also, you know, combining that with some debt, and, you know, continuing to look ahead to stay strategically, what do we want to do as an organization? What are our goals? And, you know, what do we need to do to continue to fund the things that are important to the board? If we could flip ahead, Keith, here, we did just want to touch on a few things, you know, we would have done this last year, and certainly at this point last year, there was a lot more uncertainty, right? So I think at this point, you know, we'd all agree, we're kind of, we always talk at Plant Moran about, you know, like a football analogy, we're clearly in the fourth quarter, and, you know, looking ahead, saying we're going to get back to some level of normal or new normal, whatever that looks like, but in a way that we can begin to start planning for as organizations. And so what we saw at the township, though, as we reflect and look back, in not just the township, but many local communities, the overall, you know, financial impact to the township was not as severe as predicted on many levels. I mean, part of that is, we originally were told some state funding was going to get significantly cut, and then that didn't happen to the degree that we thought. You know, there was a lot of question, you know, a year ago about what was going to happen with property taxes. Well, you know, we know that the housing market's still going really strong, right? We're all seeing that around us everywhere we go in different neighborhoods. You know, but we do continue to see a lot of companies, you know, giving up their bricks and mortars and saying, we're going to go remote, you know, folks that have an office to go back to. You know, so is that over the next year or two going to translate into some, you know, significant impact on commercial values? I don't think we know yet. You know, what we're all hearing is it's probably, if that happens, it's not expected it's going to be anywhere as severe as what we saw with the recession several years ago. I had mentioned there, going to the third bullet, that the state share revenue declines were not as significant as the state originally predicted, which was great, particularly because there were several other revenue sources which did decline significantly for the township, parks and brack, court fines and fees, rental income, those things were all down significantly. But as we mentioned, you were able to sort of proactively react to those changes and adjust your budgets accordingly. Fortunately, you were also able to get significant grant dollars to help offset some of the things that you experienced during the pandemic. Much of that was able to be recognized in 2020. And then, of course, as we're sitting here today and looking ahead, the big thing now is really focused on the ARPA dollars and, you know, the significant dollars that have been allocated to communities. And so, you know, almost to the tune of 10 million for Canton Township. And so, you know, almost to the tune of, of 10 million for Canton Township. So, you know, we're having a lot of discussions with clients around ARPA funding. You know, what, what's going to happen? There's a lot of uncertainties. What do we do? How do we plan? How, what are the communities doing with these dollars? You know, um, and maybe just a few thoughts. So one is, you know, that this, the federal government did, uh, last month issue some significant guidance. Right? That we were all waiting for guidance. Well, they, they finally issued some guidance and to the tune of, you know, over 150 pages of information called the interim final rule. So that was very helpful in some respects. It, it answered a lot of questions, um, sort of drilled down on some of the unknowns. Got really granular on some of the eligible activities. It also created a lot more questions. And in fact, some of the guidance the treasury put out in different places had conflicting information. So right now, they're sort of in this open, public comment period. And that will, that will continue through mid-July. So there is a ton of questions. There's clarity needed. There's, there's frankly, some pushback on some of the guidance that was issued because it was not what folks expected. And, and, and some of that, you know, folks would like to see revised. Um, I, I think it's important to remember that, that we have some time to spend these funds, right? So you, by 2024, you need to obligate the funds. So, you know, you got to have to have your plan that you're working towards, but you really do have, do have until 2026 to, to spend the money, right? So, you know, I don't think anyone needs to go out and rush. What I, what I will also share is that I, I split my time between working with governmental entities and healthcare entities. And here's what we saw on the healthcare side. Because in, in April, in March, April, and May of 2020, every healthcare entity across the nation got a ton of money, right? Millions and millions of dollars like, like you're experiencing now on the governmental side. And, you know, a year, 15 months later, we're still getting guidance about that money that was received 12, 15 months ago. Literally, we just got more guidance on June 11th. So I'm saying that to say, we know there's going to be changes to the guidance. We know that, you know, we, we expect that some of the rules will be modified, which maybe could provide more opportunity where there's some restrictions. And so I, I think there could be merit to kind of waiting it out a little bit to see what some of those changes are going to be over the next several months before moving forward too quickly. Um, you know, but certainly we're, we're happy to have conversations, um, you know, to share what we're hearing, you know, to speak with you further about this. Cause I know we don't, there's a lot to talk about on this topic, but just wanted, wanted to share a couple of thoughts because we know that's really what everyone's thinking about. A lot of planning and a lot of uncertainty frankly, a- around how to handle those dollars. So I think, Keith, that's our last slide, right? It kind of wraps up our prepared topic areas. Um, but certainly if there's some questions or something else you wanted us to touch on that we haven't, we would, we would be happy to do so now if, if that's appropriate. So I'll look to some advice from the supervisors to, if you want to open it up for questions.
Sure. Wendy, did you want to add anything? Who muted Wendy? Can you unmute her, Michael?
I can ask her to unmute, which would put a prompt.
Yeah.
Can't. So it might be a, um, maybe a computer issue.
Okay.
What if you hit spacebar, Wendy?
Yeah. Oh.
It pops.
Um, no, I don't have anything to add. Waiting for something really good, Wendy.
A lot to do about nothing.
Oh, I'm, I'm sweating now. No, I just, I just want to reiterate, thank you to Alicia and Keith for all the hard work on the audit. And, you know, last year was our first, actually, we were probably the first, um, client that you had that went completely remote. Cause our audit was supposed to start the Monday, everything shut down. So this year went really smooth. They've been really flexible with us and, you know, again, um, just really grateful to Sarah and Carolyn. But, you know, I know that some of the trustees may have some questions. So if there's anything that you guys want to ask now, and if you don't have anything prepared, I know Alicia and Keith and myself, Sarah, Carolyn, are happy to answer any questions if you haven't had a chance to go through it yet. And you have follow-up questions later to answer any questions that you might have.
Tanya?
I have a couple of questions, but I work in finance myself, so I know how audits are the most stressful time of the year and how, how much work it takes from an external agency and the internal agency. And I also work for a governmental agency, so. But I have a couple of quick questions, uh, as maybe it's for Wendy. The first thing was, um, talked about the taxable, you know, the taxable income that you get from the township. And, uh, is there any way of finding out how much of it is from, you know, commercial, residential, the breakdown? And also how much, uh, is there any way of finding out if it's a, you know, if it's a continuing recurring revenue? I mean, is it a new, new addition? How much of it is a new revenue and how much of it is, uh, from old residential homes? And how much is it from new construction? Because, and the reason I'm asking is to find out because the township will grow in a few more years and it'll stop growing. So, um, how much of that is, um, the percentage rise? If I can get some numbers, you don't have to tell it to me now, you can tell that to me later.
And, yeah. I, I can answer, I can get you the breakdown of what's residential versus commercial. That's, that's pretty easy. I can also run, I believe I can get some reports out of the system on what's from the new growth or at least what's anticipated for, you know, an estimation of that. Um, and I do a five-year projection based on talking with the planning department on how many, how many more properties they expect to issue permits for. I talked to the assessor about the estimated value of those properties and project that property tax out for the next five years. And I, and actually I'm currently always about this time of year, once we're wrapping up the audit, I, um, prepare the five-year projections to present to the board. And, uh, I'm working on that. And I actually just wrapped up the property tax projections for the next five years. Um, the average inflation rate that we get from the state is about one, for the last 10 years is, I think, about 1.7% of inflation factor. So I use the average of the last 10 years and that's what it works out to be. And then with the new growth, uh, it's about a, um, three to four, like three, three and a half to 4% estimated, um, property tax growth over the next five years is what, is what we're expecting. But I can give you that breakdown and I can send that out to the trustees.
Yeah, and I have just two more questions. So we talked about the pension and, you know, the legacy cost and we are paying it off every year. But, you know, it's a, it's a recurring thing which, which keeps on increasing and we are trying to pay it off. And what is the general, um, like, have we done? I see 2019, we did a lot of, uh, payment out for the legacy cost. We, are we, are we paying it off every year quite a bit? I know we said some amount in our budget for doing that. So, um, are we paying it a bit more than, you know, the average other townships and cities pay out? Pay, pay out the legacy costs or is it like, we're just keeping up with the legacy cost?
Um, Alicia could probably comment about what other communities are doing. We last, not in 2020, but in 2019, paid an additional $8 million towards our legacy cost, which would probably be more than what other communities have done as far as additional pre-funding pretty significantly. But, um, for the most part, we pay what our actuarial valuation requires us to each year. Uh, and then at the end of the year, we make, uh, you know, based on where we, where the year ends up, typically we'll take a, bring a recommendation before the trustees as to whether we're going to do an additional lump sum contribution or not, which is part of the five-year projections that I do to see, you know, what are the board goals? What is the board's strategic direction? And based on some of those, we bring a recommendation on, on pre-funding. We contribute an additional $1 million each year of pre-funding, which has worked into the budget for our OPEB, which is those costs, which has been very, very good for us. But, and we, under contractual obligations, we do slightly pre-fund a portion of our pension, but I, I wouldn't say that that's significant. But as, how we compare to the other communities, Alicia and Keith might have some, you know, some more knowledge on that. Yeah, I, I think what we see most often, particularly on the pension side, is most communities, you know, are certainly making that recommended actuarial payment. You know, which is, you know, where they're taking the liability and kind of saying, if you pay it off over 30 years, here's what you pay each year. And then some of it's current, some of it's paying off the unfunded old stuff, you know? That's, that's required to be funded in the state of Michigan. And so every community's paying that unless they're really distressed and then they have other issues. Um, we do have some communities who are trying to set additional money aside, kind of pay a little, a little bit more like the township has done. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of communities who aren't in a position to do that though. So, um, so we're not seeing as much of that, I'd say, with the pension funding. And then we also have several communities who have very minimal amounts funded towards retiree healthcare. So we've seen some focus there, um, kind of paying the required amount for pension and then trying to fund retiree healthcare. And, you know, Keith mentioned 40% as a target. So that sort of tells us inherently that the average community in the state of Michigan is not at 40%. So that's where we'd see, so I, I'd say that in all the townships, you know, probably best in class and even a little bit ahead of most in terms of really trying to ramp up the, the pre-funding.
Okay, thank you. And I had one last question about the ARPA dollars. Is that a fixed amount that we get? Is it based on our, uh, how the population, the census? Or are we, how is that, is that the amount that was allocated to this township? Or are we going to, because the census numbers have not come in finally yet. So are we expecting to get more?
No, it's, it's a set dollar amount. It's based on, we, we receive it because we're an entitlement community, which means we receive direct funding, um, from housing and urban development for our CDBG program. If we, if we didn't have the population we did, we would have to go through like a lot of the other communities in the state of Michigan to get our money through the state. And then the state was giving that allocation out. So we're pretty fortunate that we have our own, um, direct entitlement right now and that, and that's set. Unless, unless the federal government changes that allocation, like the total, the total pool of money available, um, that's, that amount is set for us.
All right. Thank you so much for answering.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thanks for a great audit and appreciate it every time you guys come and tell us how great Wendy and her team is doing. And Wendy, I don't take it for granted that, uh, I've been able to say that eight times now, so that's great. Thank you. Um, so the presentation sparked some questions. I don't know if these are more things ancillary, um, to the audit. But one was, um, when you talked about our taxable value going up. And I thought back on when I first joined in 2012, coming out of the recession. And I saw, our, our big target was always, can we get back to taxable value that we had before? And so it's nice to see that we finally did. When I was looking at it, it looked like we did in like 2017 or maybe 2018 on that chart. But then you mentioned new construction. And so, um, separate from this, Wendy, I was wondering if we could, um, see if the taxable, average taxable value of a home or something like that, has that recovered to where it was back in 2007 or '06 or '08? Without factoring in the new construction that also has raised, you know, us far beyond what we were at before the recession.
Um, I think we could come up with estimation. Uh, um, I'd have to put some kind of assumptions together to, to kind of put that together. But I, there's for sure I can do something. I mean, obviously the app, the, when we look at the last 10 years, the actual inflation factor has been 1.7%. So if we took our taxable value from 2007 or whatever and add, and actually add up with the tax, what the inflation factor has been for each of those years.
Oh, yeah.
Probably come, come up with a pretty, you know, a ballpark figure of what, what that would be. So I can put something together.
Okay, because that's what the SEV is based on, the increase in it for each.
The taxable value is based on that. Value.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other question was the pension liability. The annual liability that you talked about in that we often try to add more at the end. That, I think you've said this to us in other reports, but that number every year is going up, isn't it? It's more than it was the year before.
Yeah, so the assumptions with MERS has changed. People are living longer, so that actually makes our liability go up. They've reduced the, uh, interest rate, assumed rate of return on interest rates based on actual results. So that is changes. And when that changes, that means our contributions, we have to pay more into the system if they're not going to earn as much interest on what we're paying into the system. So there's, there's been a couple of things that have happened recently that have caused our liability to actually increase. Um, and those are probably the two largest that I can think of, Alicia. I don't know if there's another one. I was trying to pull up the report, interest was the second one, what was the first one you said? Was it mortality? People, yep, people living longer, mortality assumptions. Those, those are the key ones. I mean, that, and that's just, um, you know, and that's not just, that's not just a township. I mean, that's what everyone's experiencing. And I think that's, that's part of a frustration frankly, right? You're trying to get ahead and fund this money and you're like, our funding status isn't improving because the liability is going up at the same time that we're increasing the asset in the trust. So, yeah. Yeah, in, in fact, when we paid that, um, $8 million in, uh, last year, I, I can't remember the change. But when we paid it in, based on, you know, just looking at what that $8 million would do, it increased our funding percentage. Like, I don't know, I found to say six or 7%. And then when the, because they changed the assumptions, it ended up only funding it an extra 2% or something. So we, we barely got ahead by doing that. But, um, but it was important that you did that. Which some, some did that weren't able to pre-fund. I mean, that's the other thing that we frame.
Okay, yeah, very difficult topic. Um, lastly, quickly, any ARPA funds going to go retroactively back towards 2020? Since that's kind of where the damage was caused financially? Or so, or it's all only to be used and recorded in the future years?
So, so some of what you can do is to, um, basically to get the safety supplies, like the, um, safety equipment, the masks and whatnot. We could go back and fund that, although I think the majority of our PPE has been funded by grant dollars already, um, that we have received through CARES Act. So, um, I would say for the most part, depending, um, you know, what the board opts to do, you know, I mean, I know, um, I've heard potentially grants to, to small businesses. If we were to do something like that, that potentially could be used for them to go back to 2020 to help for their PPE. But that would be for, for them, I would say probably for the most part, it would be prospectively, um, prospectively for us.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Um, not really a question, just to comment to, um, thank Wendy and her team for, um, doing such great work. And to thank, um, Alicia and Keith for, uh, giving us this great news. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the hard work. And Wendy, we had talked about earlier, why don't you give a summary of what you're finding with the American Rescue Funds in terms of what we're looking at? As you looked at this 150-page document and watched these webinars and requirements, does they change?
Right, right. Um, the, the guidance has been kind of confusing, um, to put it mildly. But I've attended, you know, a, you know, a number of webinars. Uh, and, and there's really a few things that you can do with the funds. You can make up for some of your lost revenue. And it's interesting, they have a pretty specific formula on lost revenue. And what counts is what you have to include is revenue to, to lose. So we can't just, for instance, look at the theater and say, okay, we lost so much revenue at the Village Theater this year. And we lost so much money at the summit. We have to take into account a lot of our revenue sources, including our property taxes. Our property taxes didn't go down, so that's not lost revenue. Our state shared revenue didn't go down, so we didn't lose money there. But we have to include that as an overall revenue when we're calculating out what we've lost and haven't lost. We do not include the water sales revenue, but we do include the sewer sales revenue. So when you look at the sewer sales revenue, our sewage revenue went down this year. So we can count that towards lost revenue calculation, even though we intentionally reduced our sewage revenue fees. So it's, it's, it's just a goofy calculation at the end that helps us. Because we have much more flexibility and what we can use our money on if it is making up for lost revenue. Because if you can't come up with a lost revenue and you're not re- Because if you can't come up with a lost revenue and you're not reimbursing yourselves for PPE, you basically are restricted to using it on water and sewer infrastructure or broadband infrastructure. So, um, I'm, I've really been trying to take my time to go through the loss revenue calculation. They also allow you to use a, uh, inflation factor of either what your actual growth has been or four point one percent, whichever is higher. So I've got to go back through from, I think, sixteen to seventeen, seventeen to eighteen, eighteen to nineteen, to see what the, what that actual growth was to compare it to four point one percent. So, um, you know, we've been, uh, listening to webinars, coming up with some ideas. I've been sharing, Anne-Marie and Supervisor Graham Hudek and I have been, you know, kind of brainstorming and jotting down some things as, as they've come up and we're hearing from other communities. So once we kind of have a little bit more of a package together and here's what our lost revenue looks like, here are some of the things that you can use it on, um, we'll be coming back before the, before the, um, board for a study session to come up with kind of what we want the plan to be for, for the township and, and set that plan moving forward. And it's just a plan. It doesn't mean, you know, as Alicia had indicated, um, we have until twenty twenty four to obligate those funds. So we are going to have to come up with a plan. But if in six months or nine months from now, we say, you know what? Kind of like the CDBG, we are going to spend some of the CDBG fund dollars for, um, uh, I think it was for food, for the, um, for the underprivileged for food. Well, that, we never spent that money. So we reobligated that for, um, the housing rehab. So in six to nine months from now, if we start out with a, okay, here's what we think we want to spend it on. And in six to nine months, we say, you know, we want to change that. We want to spend it towards something different. We, we will have that opportunity to reobligate those funds. So, so we'll, um, definitely be bringing forth some information to the, um, board trustees to hear what we can and can't spend it on, give some ideas, find out what your ideas are and kind of have a set initial plan of what we want to, what we want to do with those funds.
Some of the items that we're seeing, I've been in several meetings where they do like around Robin and they're asking everybody, every community, what are you thinking of? What are you thinking of? And I'm seeing a lot of similarities, which some of them that we've garnered from, um, the big things are water, sewer and broadband, which fits a lot of our board goals in terms of expanding like broadband for future technologies. Um, SNCOG is looking at that. They're going to be doing a report on that actually on Thursday. So broadband is a big one in terms of, um, expanding broadband communities so that you would own your own broadband or fiber through the communities. And if, um, different carriers wanted to come on, you could charge for that usage. And then, you know, basically not only expand broadband to all of your residents, but also make some revenue for the township. Sewer, um, we, you know, look with, we had a report from OHM, how, where do we need to maybe expand some of our sewer usage? Um, water, you know, where are we needing to expand water in the township? Other things that we're hearing like our businesses is we know some of our businesses have suffered through COVID. So what they're looking at is, you know, how can we do small business grants? And you also have the ability to bring something, a company on to facilitate those. Cause as you know, if you start giving grants or loans like for six months, let's say, you would have to bring a company on to facilitate, you know, the, all of applications and the renewals and things like that, you know, something we don't have the resources for. So I'm hearing things like that. Oh, what else? As, as Wendy said, you know, even some of the revenue lost of some of our facilities, like the theater or the summit, it's not a one for one dollar. So if we lost, let's say, ten thousand dollars, it's not, you don't automatically get ten thousand dollars. There's formulas that Wendy has to use to figure out what can we get back? So there's a lot of creative ideas out there. As, as she said, also the courts are asking, you know, can we get some of the lost revenue for us? In terms of, because we have thirty for fifth district court is part of our community. So there's a lot of clever things. There's also partnerships for me. Wayne County is getting three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. So while we're getting nine point two, they're, they have three hundred and thirty-nine. So they're coming and saying, how can we partner with you? You know, take some of our money and partner with some of yours to do some of the larger projects. So there's items like that, where that we have to look for some, you know, cohesiveness where we can work with each other. Any comments or questions? So Ayesha and Keith, I guess, what are you seeing other communities looking at, maybe to spend some of their funds on?
Um, the, the items that you talked about, um, that are, are, they're similar to what we're hearing. I also see communities really interested in, uh, trying to maximize the lost revenue category. Because that does give you more flexibility, as Wendy said, with what you can do with the dollars. Um, you know, because you're kind of limited to this infrastructure hazard pay. And then like pandemic relief and economic impact, right? Those are like the categories. But, uh, you know, as Wendy was talking about, if you have lost revenue, then you have, it's not, you know, you can't do whatever you want with it, which is what I think we thought was going to happen before the guidance came out, right? You get lost revenue, you're kind of replenishing a loss or reimbursing yourself and you can sort of do what you want. Well, we, we now know that that's not the case, but you could, you know, I have a community that's like, they haven't been able to figure out how to finance, you know, some fire trucks or, you know, a fire station. So like, there's folks who are saying, can we look at our capital plan from the past five, ten years of things we've been deferring? And is there an opportunity? Is there enough lost revenue to do some of, some of that as well? Um, so I, I, when I think about what's in the guidance, I think I've seen or heard communities across the state probably touching on most categories. You know, depending on the community, depending on the demographics, depending on, you know, the financial condition, you know, folks are just kind of focused in different areas. But, you know, certainly a lot of opportunity. And what we're hearing you talk about are things that we're hearing other communities discuss as well.
Okay.
Have you heard anything different or unique from any of your communities? No?
Michael?
First, thank you, Plant Maria, for your services and giving an outside look to our processes, procedures, our books. And, um, you know, I really appreciate that function. I appreciate your services, um, as well, that you offer us individually, but the overall, the overall idea of having an outside entity looking through, um, to determine that everything's on the up and up is, um, makes me both as an elected official, but also as a Canton Township taxpayer feel, feel good. Feel good about my, how my resources are being used. Well, in two thousand and eighteen, we, we put a tax on the ballot and I was very shocked at some of the, um, ideas that certain residents thought we could and could not do with their money. It was almost like, I don't think they understand we pass budgets and open and that we are audited every year and that every dollar has to be accounted for. Um, you have a pretty, pretty tight, pretty tight processes here. At Canton Township in general, and then having that outside set of eyes, um, you know, makes me feel good. Outside of that, you know, and then congratulations to, to the finance, uh, you know, department for, for what you do for the township. And we really appreciate it. So I'm grateful for that. I have no, um, nothing that looked substantially out of the ordinary. Yeah. This was all kind of consistent with what I expected to see after, you know, kind of seeing how the year was coming to an end with the budget amendments. And, um, so I'm not overly shocked about all of, all that stuff. But, um, so that was good with regard to the, you know, nine point two million dollar. I think if I had to, since we're like, you know, throwing spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks. You know, I think when I, when I think about philosophically, kind of what, what makes sense to me, you know, with what I would want to, to see with, um, as a fiduciary for the organization would be, I think, first and foremost, to prioritize any of the lost revenue for the township itself. Because we are the collective of the taxpayers and we distribute those resources accordingly. And so I do think that I would, would hope that we would prioritize our lost revenue. And then potentially look at additional, um, projects that we could do that are consistent with the law and the guidance that comes through. And then I think I would be comfortable with, um, potentially being a, um, intermediary or sending out money to other entities. But I think if I were to do that, I would probably want to see that money prioritized to the, to the nonprofits, uh, deliver services to the community in accordance with the, um, with one of those exemptions under, um, five hundred and one, the, the section, section five hundred and one of, of the tax code, those who are social service agencies, those who deliver mental health services, who deliver, you know, we have, we have First Step here in Canton Township, we have Growth Works, we have a number, uh, we have, we have Habitat for Humanity. Many of those organizations saw excessive donation drops and were unable to meet the need, um, to build homes, but to help solve the home, you know, the home crisis for, for, for people, housing crisis for people and families who don't have access to, to a good home, who help, um, individuals when they are in an abusive relationship, find housing security, to help adolescents, um, and adults who are struggling with substance abuse, which we talked about today, um, drinking and, and drug use is on the rise right now. And so is the subsequent criminality that comes with that, operating under the influence of liquor. So there's a number of nonprofits in the organ, in the community that I, I think I would want to see. I would want to see if, if, if we're going to be helping them with their loss revenue, which I know is a provision under the law, because I read the law. Um, and, and then potentially grants, um, to businesses. I do think I, I'm, from a philosophical standpoint, I'm, I'm always a little bit weary of giving money to, um, to businesses because, um, you know, there appear to be some disproportionality, like a grant to an agency, a grant to a, a, even a nonprofit is money that's being used for the general public. You know, a ten thousand dollar grant to a business could, could be a ten thousand dollar distribution from a partnership directly into the pocket of the, the principal, you know, of, of one of the members of, of a partner. So I do get a little bit worried when it comes to, um, giving money to for-profit entities. But I think a lot of people got hit and I think that that does make sense. But if I were to kind of talk about, at least my, my underwriting, underwriting philosophy, it would be, you know, we, we, um, you can't pour from an empty cup, right? So I think we replenish the lost revenue that we have. And then we kind of go through, go from there, look at additional projects we might, we might want to do that benefit the community, which in accordance with the rules and the, and the laws. Other than that, thanks. Good job.
And I think at a meeting I was at, just to let you know, in terms of the, um, domestic violence and mental health issues, Congresswoman Haley Stevens and Rashida Tlaib, we're going to look at how you can help fund some of that also. Because there is a humanness to human, you know, suffering to what has happened. Anyone else? All right, great. Well, thank you very much for joining it. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for all your good work, team. Before we begin our, our next consent calendar, I just wanted to, I know some people are, um, to talk about, um, you know, we, we did a press release today. We did lose, um, Officer Ed Yeak. So that went out today. And I just want to say that, um, a lot of outpouring from community members and police and retirees have, have come in. So, you know, we'd like to thank the community and everything that they've done and continue to do to support our, our policemen and firemen as they go through this, as well as staff members who knew Officer well. But thank you very much. I want to let everybody know that Chief Chad isn't with us tonight, but I just wanted to let him know that he was thanking everyone for all their support. So, um, the next item is a consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I wasn't aware that we had, I thought we had done an RBA and I didn't know it was a consent.
An RBA on what? We do have a consent calendar? No, we have three items on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve, approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, consider time amendment for remaining twenty twenty-one meeting dates for the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage. C two, consider approving the annual payment of Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association dues. And item C three, request approval of the township's twenty twenty annual comprehensive financial report.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Madam, let's see here, Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres to I, Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar approved. Uh, moving on to the general calendar, the first name is G zero, G zero that we added on, kind of motion for consider approval for the emergency purchase order for the grounds repair of the Katie Boyer barn at Preservation Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the emergency purchase orders for the ground repairs of the Katie Boyer barn at Preservation Park to file, the filing companies to be paid from the account number listed, HTC Maintenance and Repair Buildings and Additions. Van Buren Electric, four hundred and thirty dollars, Corby Energy Services, two thousand and ninety-five dollars, Mannequin Smith Group, nine thousand five hundred dollars, and then Belle Fort Property Restoration for eighteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents for a total amount of thirty-one thousand twenty dollars and forty-three cents. And I move to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. Due to the fire that took place on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the Katie Boyer barn and silos deemed unsalvageable. To continue serving the public, it is necessary that the grounds be recovered in a timely manner. The costs associated with recovery totals thirty-one thousand twenty dollars and forty-three cents, which has been approved and will be reimbursed by the insurance company. A budget adjustment is necessary for all expenses and revenue associated with the burn. Due to the urgency of this matter, a memo was sent to the Supervisor and Finance Director requesting to waive the bidding process for the emergency services. Upon approval, several purchase of orders were submitted. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
I just said, all these, uh, expenses have been approved by the insurance company and they'll be reimbursed. We do anticipate there's going to be other expenses, um, in the future. Uh, this is what we know for now. Belle Four plans, uh, the latest I've heard is that they will be on site tomorrow morning demo, start demolition of the silo and removal of all the debris from the silo and barn and backfilling that so that we can, um, remove the fence and kind of get a, a space back that's a little more useful.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Kate?
Um, yeah. The, the last we had heard, I believe, was that, um, they were looking into the silo to see if it was, um, you know, structurally intact or it had some integrity to it. So I'm guessing this means that it is not. Um, could you just comment a little bit on what's going on with the silo?
Yeah. So we had a structural engineer doing a valuation of the integrity of that building. And they deemed it a safe measure that, um, is of best interest of everyone as that comes down.
Thank you, Greg.
Anyone else? Diane?
I'm just curious and just a ballpark figure. Do you know, you know, once they're able to remove all that and clear it out and remove the fence, is that going to be a month or kind of ballpark figure with it being the beginning of summer? You know, people like to go there.
Yep. I anticipate if everything goes as planned, it will be completely gone by the farmer's market this Sunday.
Oh, wow.
Worst case scenario would be early next week. Um, the next step is we're waiting on approval from the insurance company to put up a tent, you know, forty by eighty tent in that area that would be used by the farmer's market and all of our rental events. Our hope is that we'll have everything removed this week and the tent installed next week. So that would be another, um, RBA that you would see coming to you once we get that approval from the insurance company.
So you think the insurance company then will, uh, cover the cost of the tent?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thanks.
And also to let you know, there is a plaque, there's a plaque inside the barn, which we're trying to recover. And we're going to try to get it, see if we can gain any other mementos to have, like the little memorial of the barn also. So they're not going to, they're going to. So they're not going to, they're going to slowly pull it apart to see if they can find that plaque. Hopefully it's still intact. Any other questions? Michael?
Just maybe in me, a little bit of a stickler on this. Is there a reason why we don't in the motion say that we are waiving the purchasing policy? Because I, I do see that one of these invoices at 11,000, it's over the $10,000 threshold that kind of requires a, or I, I assume we want to get this thing cleaned up as fast as possible. So I assume that's why we're going through with some verbal quotes, some email quotes, and that we are doing quotes as opposed to putting something out for the RFP. I just didn't see in the language of the motion that we were waiving the bidding, or that we're waiting, waiving the formal bidding process through the purchasing policy, and so I was just curious. It was just like.
I think since it is a, an emergency PO that was approved through Amor, our supervisor, Hudek, and Director Trumble, that that would not actually be a waiver of the purchasing policy because we are following the policy for emergency purchase orders.
Beautiful. You answered my question. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Clark Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G2, can I have a motion to consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning code? I'm sorry, G1. I'll go back one. Consider waiving the purchase policy and approve the emergency purchase of a Ford Explorer Hybrid Police Interceptor and approve the budget amendment for the police department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2021 Ford Explorer Hybrid from Signature Ford at 3942 West Lansing Road in Perry, Michigan, 48872 via the Macomb County bid listed in the amount of $35,834, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. In the morning of June 10th, 2021, this police interceptor was involved in a rollover accident at Ford Hagerty, causing significant body damage to the vehicle. As such, Fleet Services is recommending replacement. The damaged vehicle will be sent to auction via our online auction site, Bidcorp.com. The proceeds from the sale will partially offset the cost of the replacement vehicle. If approved by the board, Fleet Services will replace the unit with the 2021 Ford Explorer Hybrid for the Macomb County bid awarded to Signature Ford. A budget amendment in an amount of $35,834 is necessary as this unit was not budgeted for replacement in 2021. So Jade or Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
I know the police chief isn't on this evening, but um, there are some pictures of the vehicle there as well, and then your RBA does say that delivery is expected sixty to ninety days from order date, and I can just comment that that is not the case. We are seeing a delay in the delivery of all of our fleet. We ordered some back in January, and we still haven't received our initial order, so, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Chris, did you want to add anything?
No, I think Director Smith handled that.
And as you know, as they said, we have approximately, I think we have six or seven vehicles that are back ordered. They were supposed to arrive in June because of part shortages and everything. We aren't even getting an indication as when they're going to arrive.
Correct.
So we are seeing that. Kate, you had a question?
Just that I noted in the implementation plan that all technology will be removed from the old vehicle and restored in, and be reinstalled into the new unit. So um, just want to make sure that that's going to work as planned.
Um, yeah, if it's salvageable, it will be reused, yes.
Any other questions? Some of the vehicles that are back ordered, just to let you know, though, are hybrid vehicles. So per our board goals, we're, we're going towards that, so that's good.
This one is a hybrid as well.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Clark Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hughdack.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G2, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding JS3 Investments LLC rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance, which rezones the tax parcel listed from C4 interchange service district and central business district overlay to C3 regional commercial district and central business district overlay into table, I'm sorry, and, and for consideration of a second reading on July 13th, 2021.
We didn't say table, right?
I am not including anything.
Okay. We went through that before. Okay. So, thank you. The applicant proposes to rezone a single parcel located east of Hagerty Road between Ford Road and Cherry Hill Road, 2100 Hagerty Road from C4 interchange service central business district overlay to C3 regional commercial center business district overlay. There's a vacant structure previously used as a restaurant and associated parking improvements on the parcel. The applicant states their application that they propose to put the property to retail and storage use. However, any storage will be required to be accessory to the principal retail use. The current C4 district does not allow standalone retail uses unless they are part of a larger planned shopping center, which is subject site is not large enough to accommodate. If the site is rezoned to C3, then any permitted use in the C3 district will be established at the site, subject to all zoning ordinance requirements. Therefore, the proposed retail land use is conceptual. At this time, it could change based on the available development options of the zoning ordinance. Jade, did you want to add anything to that?
I have nothing more to add to this. Patrick is on the call tonight, if there was questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Summer, did you want to add anything? Because Lee is on the planning?
Um, no, nothing to add. It was an interesting planning commission meeting. We also did the hotels on, um, that were being evaluated for Ford Road and Lily. So if you saw a lot of comments in the planning commission meetings related to hotels, that's where it came from. But this is the storage unit, and so it didn't have anything to do with hotels, but nothing to add.
Thank you. Did any questions or comments? Steven?
Um, it's just was difficult for me to understand where this was actually located. What was the restaurant that it was? Like, the maps aren't the usual planning commission maps. They're more zoning, and the maps were more difficult to read. So if you can just enlighten me on that, I was finding that hard.
Yeah, um, if you can promote Patrick's, I think I have the location correctly, but I want him to correct me if I'm wrong. It is just south of Ford Road on Hagerty and on the east side. Right, right. Not too far south of there on the east side.
Oh, is that like the they, they can, they can mail one, or that became an Indian restaurant?
It used to be a shoka restaurant.
By the, by the. I'll go ahead.
Um, north of Life, of Lifetime. Patrick, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, and I, I did see that, um, we, we didn't have the typical maps in there. I, I think I tried to save, put them in last week, but they must not have saved. But yeah, that is an old vacant restaurant there, right on Hagerty Road, just south of Ford Road on the east side of the road. The restaurant has been vacant for some time, and the, the property doesn't look that good. The building is kind of run down. The parking lot is, is crumpled and, and needs to be repaired, among other things.
Right.
So you said storage unit, Summer, is this going to be a storage unit, or is the intent?
Yes. Storage unit.
The, um, the applicant had, had looked at some storage that would be accessory to their retail. So then their application, they had put retail and storage, and so the, the commercial districts will allow for storage as an accessory to a principal use, like a retail. So if they retail but have some accessory storage, um, they could, they could do that. This is across the street from the storage units on the west side of Hagerty Road. So for lo, location purposes, the ones on the west side of Hagerty Road, they, they must have been there for a while. Those are classified as mini warehouses in the zoning ordinance, which are typically located in industrial zones. They're not permitted in commercial zones, so that property on the west side is a legal non-conforming use. But the, uh, the building on the east side, if they want to do storage, they would have to do accessory to a commercial or, you know, use.
So this could be like, if I'm thinking correctly, like, I, I can't remember if it's Warren or Joy Road. There's like a U-Haul retail store that maybe has some storage behind it or something like that. Is that what you're referring to?
They hadn't, they hadn't proposed a specific use for the site, um, and with their, with a rezoning, they, they're not obligated to give us one, uh, one use unless they were going to do a conditional rezoning. So if they were to do a use like that, we would have to take a look at what the operations would be and, uh, the, the truck traffic and the parking, uh, something like that. It, it might work better in industrial, just depending on the location, what the operations are. But if they're going to have several trucks and things like that, that could be difficult in a commercial district.
I have shared the map, um, the location here. Can everybody see the map?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the location here, and here's, this is Ford Road.
I see, yeah. It wouldn't be my first choice for a business to put in this corridor here. Honestly, but I don't know what we can do to keep that from happening. I mean, with hotels and other restaurants in the area, it's a little out of place to me, but I guess I'll have to wait and see what exactly it is going to be.
And one of the downsides of the current C4 district is that it has very few permitted and special land uses. But those permitted, permitted and special land uses revolve mostly around large shopping centers, hotels as permitted uses, gas stations, um, and, and also restaurants. So it's, is the C4 district is a, is an interchange service district where those uses are geared towards your interchange traveler. This property is located a little off the interchange. It's not as convenient from the interchange. So some of those uses that are provided for in the interchange service are difficult to locate on the site, which is maybe one of the reasons it's been vacant for as long as it has been. And ironically, the interchange service does not allow just a freestanding retail store in order to repurpose the building. The interchange service district requires a retail to be part of a larger shopping center. So I don't even know if the site would be large enough to have a, a large shopping center allowed by the, the C4 district. So by effectively downzoning it to C3, it actually opens up a number of different commercial uses that could be more viable on a small parcel like this that's located a little bit farther from the intersection than some of the gas stations and some of those interchange uses like the hotels.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
And then it wasn't too long ago where a hotel was going to go there. Isn't that correct? Wasn't that considered by the year ago?
There was some discussion, preliminary discussion. We never got any formal plans for that, but I know that there was discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, they talked about that during the planning commission meeting. That they thought about it.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions or comments? Time now?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So if they were thinking about the hotel in the past, would that be C Fordman, or is it C Street? I, I'm just, I'm still trying to understand all the, you know, the zoning thing, so please help me out here.
Sure, that's a, that's a good question. In the C4, um, in the interchange service district, hotels are a permitted land use. So in the C4 district, if they, they wouldn't need a special land use, they could just submit a site plan for a hotel. And if it meets the technical standards of the ordinance, then we would be required to approve the hotel. On the other hand, in the proposed C3 district, hotels are a special land use, which means that they would not be entitled to that use by right. If they were to zone it to C3, but then wanted to put a hotel on the property before they could apply for special lane, or before they could apply for site plan, they would have to apply for a special land use, and there are several discretionary standards of special land use that would apply, and it would not necessarily guarantee approval of a hotel on the site if it were zoned C3.
So what is the storage on the other side? Is that a C4 then, or a C3? It said something about special land use for that. I'm just trying to understand what type of thing that could be built there.
Yeah, the, uh, the property on the east or the west side of Hagerty Road, that is in the, the C3, C3 district, the same as what's proposed, but the use there on the west side of the road is, um, it's a, it's called a mini warehouse use according to the zoning ordinance. And the mini warehouse uses, I believe, are only allowed in the light industrial and general industrial districts. So my, my guess with this property on the west side of Hagerty Road, that storage use is that that use was likely established before the property was rezoned for commercial or before the zoning ordinance was amended to no longer allow mini warehouses in commercial districts. So when that happens, where the township amends an ordinance or rezones a property, if there's a pre-existing use, that use can continue as what's called a non-conforming use, where the use can continue as long as it doesn't change or, uh, become abandoned based on a number of different standards. And so, um, with the case of the property on the west side of Hagerty Road, it is a non-conforming use that if someone came in and C3 property and wanted to do a mini warehouse, they would not be permitted to do that by our zoning ordinance. But if someone has an existing mini warehouse in a C3 district, and they've been using it for many years, including before the ordinance was amended, they would have a right to continue that use. They would just not be able to do any kind of expansions or enlargements that would go against the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so if anyone, because they talked about thinking about building a hotel. So if they wanted to do, build a hotel now, it would, they would have had to apply for some sort of a special land use plan, right? As you said in the beginning.
Uh, correct. If they wanted to, if they have the property to rezone to C3, they would have to apply for a special land use for the hotel. And then if they were to obtain the special land use approval by the township board and the planning commission, then, and only then could they have the right to apply for a site plan for a hotel there.
Thank you, Patrick.
Kate?
Hi, Patrick. Um, just wondering if in the C3 zoning, if a restaurant is allowed? Because, um, you know, the site has a history of having had restaurants there, although it doesn't currently. I'm just wondering if that C3 zoning would still have the flexibility for a restaurant?
Yes, restaurants are permitted uses in C3 and C4. So their ability to, uh, to do a restaurant on the site would not be changed. They're permitted in both districts.
Okay, and then I was wondering if the owner or some kind of agent from the, from this item is here as a participant, just in case they wanted to give us any information about what they think the site might be used for?
There's an Andy Andre, is that? Who's raising his hand?
Yeah, he was, um, he was a representative of the petitioner at the planning commission meeting.
Do you want to ask him a question, Kate?
I was just wondering if they could comment on what they are thinking the site would be used for?
Um, Andy, you're, you can speak now.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Andy Andre Avanti Development Group, 330 Enterprise Court, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. I'm working with the applicant on the property. Yeah, and I can speak to a couple of things. I think Patrick did a really good job explaining when you look at the surrounding area and you see some of the restrictions that are, that come along with the C4 zoning district, which are fine, and, and that's, that, that, that zoning district is in place for certain things. But then when you look at the size of the parcel, um, it's, it's very restrictive for the size of that parcel to have to. it's it's very restrictive for the size of that parcel to have to do a, you know, a full center. You couldn't do a standalone retail. And so the the purpose of that is you we have other properties that that are adjacent to where we're at across the street and that that are C three zoning. That C three zoning really offers more flexibility for that property with the uses that are permitted as well as if we chose to go with a special land use. So really, is there, we don't have anything in particular that we're that we have right now. I can tell you we're 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 targeting it for retail and that really is pivotal then to have a to have it to that C three zoning district. The C four would ultimately make it almost undevelopable as Patrick had mentioned. So we're targeting retail and is is, you know, as we we come out of the pandemic, you know, people have changed their patterns of buying. You 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 don't see larger centers. Those are the things that I think are going to be impacted as we continue to move forward. And the smaller centers that have flexibility within tenant spaces are going to continue to be things that are in demand. And so ultimately, that's I I kind of see that as a as a very possible use there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, Clark Seagres, please call roll, take roll call on the motion.
Orinsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Kenguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist, hi, Slavens.
Sorry about that. I.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, G three. Consider waiving the bidding process and approval proposal from Emco Incorporated for an internal promotional process.
I'm supervisor. I move to waive the bidding process and approve the proposal from Emco or E M P C O Incorporated for an internal promotional process for the position of police sergeant for an estimated amount not to exceed seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
Of course.
Thank you. The police department is requesting to waive the bidding process and accept a proposal from Emco Incorporated to run an internal promotional process for the position of police sergeant. This process would establish a two-year eligibility list as required by union contract. The cost for this proposal is based on an estimated eighteen officers participating in the process totaling seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Um, Chris, I think this is the one. If you have any other comments on this one for Chad.
Uh, just one of the, he had mentioned that, you know, it's required by the union contract, obviously. And that he feels very confident in this company having consistency moving forward and a high integrity with this vendor. Emco's obviously kind of sets the standard for the testing and the police force and strong integrity to this company. But we also have HR manager, Crane Conley on here. If you have any other questions that I can't answer for you as well.
Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Karine, did you have any questions or comments?
Um, I think Chris covered it. I can answer any questions. The process is pretty lengthy, so our current list expires actually just expired last week. So the process will be underway. And we'll have a new eligibility list established by November. So we give the the interested parties at least sixty days to study and prepare for the written exam. This covers both a written and oral and an in basket. Three-part evaluation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, Clark Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Orinsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G four. Consider approval for the emergency purchase of boardroom audio and video equipment for streaming capabilities.
I'm supervisor. I move to approve the emergency equipment upgrade for the Canton Township Administration boardroom to provide per video systems at two, six, four, seven, one, South Point Road, Perry'sburg, Ohio, four, three, five, five, one, and the amount of eleven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars to be paid from the account number listed, capital, outlet, computers and equipment, and to approve the unauthorized budget adjustment as attached.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Board of Trustees and Planning Commission meetings were forced to take place via Zoom and not in the boardroom. Michigan Legislature has mandated that meetings must start taking place in person by December twenty twenty one. Canton Township to comply with this order and still allow for those individuals that are not comfortable or able to meet in person, the audio and video equipment in the boardroom will need to be upgraded to offer streaming capabilities. Pro Video Systems provided a quote with the amount of eleven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for the equipment and streamlining services in the township boardroom. In addition to the possible equipment shortage, the streamlining capabilities are of high importance, making this a timely manner. The cable supervisor met with Leisure Services Director and Finance Director requesting to waive the bidding process for the equipment. Canton is a longstanding working relationship with Pro Video and currently hold a service contract with them. Greg, did you want to add anything?
Sorry, um, no, just that Pro Video has been a great partner for us for many years. Fairly confident. Fairly, we're very confident in their abilities to meet the needs to be able to provide the service of having these meetings in person, but still allow individuals to participate online. So person, they'll be able to do that. Meet that need.
And our target date is to have this all completed by August first, correct? Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Summer?
Just a quick comment. I know that the impetus for doing this was is related to COVID. But I think it's a great thing that we're doing and it fits along with our goal of transparency for the community. And, you know, increasing accessibility to township board meetings. So I'm glad that we're doing this. You know, irrespective of COVID.
You're right, Summer. We were able to include a lot of our ADA residents in some of the some meetings and they really were happy because they can't get transportation to the meetings. That's very true. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, great. Thank you. Um, Clark Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Orinsky.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Seagrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. So that includes our general calendar. Do we have any public comments? We have five people. Any public comment? Any public comment? You can raise your hand for those people who are on our Zoom here. I don't see any phone callers. Okay, no public comment. Um, any other comments from staff members? Any comments from board members? Tanya?
Yeah, I was, I got a few calls this week about the trash being not picked up or some emails and I was one. You know, I got a call from on Thursday trash on usually the first of the beginning of the week, our our home here is the beginning of the weekend. It was picked up right on Monday and they did some compost pick up today. The neighborhood. But I am getting a lot of calls from like I got at least two or three calls and people are at the end of the week and their trash was not picked up on Saturday. So I am just wondering if G F L is still behind. Dave, if you have any comments on that.
I can I can speak to that. My update while we were actually on the call tonight. They are caught up on trash and recycling and they are they have a few spot stops that are left from compost that they're picking up tomorrow. So they are caught up with trash and recycling. I will be honest with you. If a resident did not leave their trash out last week, when they went back through to pick it up and they did not get it picked up, so they're going to have to put it back out this week at their normal schedule. But I was in contact over the weekend with G F L. And they communicated with us on Saturday. We posted this on the Facebook page as well. And then also got an email back from them last night at eight thirty and again, just about about an hour ago.
Yes, and Jade says, I mean, we are we are pushing G F L to continue communication. We are still getting probably not as definitely not as much as last week, but we are getting emails and calls in the office about G F L. Here they are having resource issues still, but we are on top of sending them everything that we get and making sure that they communicate and like Jade said, keeping residents informed by placing it on the Facebook page for municipal services.
And if they have any issues, do they call the G F L number directly?
That's what, yes, that's what they're supposed to be doing. But if they are seeing a big issue, they can just call DPW directly. I and I would just direct direct whoever you're talking to, either to G F L or to DPW. We'll get it taken care of. That's going to be the most efficient way for us to track it. I I do appreciate the the inquiries from from all of you as well that you are getting, but if you just have them contact us directly, it's going to save them time and we can react a little bit quicker as well.
And Jade, your team also reached out to other communities to see if there are the similar issues. So we are not alone, like Stephen had said also in a previous meeting.
Yes. Actually, I live in a I live in a different community with a different hauler and my compost is still sitting on my curb as well. It's usually gone by six o'clock in the morning.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Comments on that? Okay. Anything else, Michael?
I would just, you know, reiterate the comments you had made earlier about the Canton officer who passed away. Ed was in an S R at the high school and, you know, the the whole community at large is is mourning, but so is the school community as well as, you know, officers and in touch with employees. And and so I just want to let everybody know here, you know, that I'm holding everybody, you know, in my heart. And it's just, it's a really hard time, so.
And a GoFundMe page is being established, just to let everybody know. So we'll pass that information along to the community. Yeah. Um, another thing is, as we know, the governor has lifted some rules on regarding COVID restrictions. We are still obligated to follow Miosha rules. And we did receive an update to that today. Chris, I don't know if Kareem's still on, but Chris, have you read able to read through that and determine if there's any changes for us with Miosha yet?
Yeah, we did read through it. So Karine and I spoke prior to this meeting as well, and we feel that we'll be able to lift some of those restrictions. I think that we're going to have to have some direction as far as still following CDC guidance, because CDC guidance still has like travel restrictions and so forth in there to kind of go after. And we followed CDC guidance through this entire pandemic as well as M D H H S and Miosha. And we know that, you know, with those Miosha guidelines being lifted, M D H S being lifted, really what we have to fall back on is the guidelines and just like a standard in firefighting or anything else, we want to continue to follow guidelines and best practices. So I think that's a conversation we'll probably have to have during the week here, just to see where you guys as a board want to fit into that.
And as we spoke of earlier today, there are no capacity limits either, correct, as of right now for what she's lifted with our theaters or any any of our rooms right now also. But that does not mean we are resource constrained still.
And we can still be, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, we can still side or land on the side of safety, right, with, you know, requiring more than what the state recommends or or what the state requires by following the CDC guidelines. So those are all options that I think that you as a board will have to make those decisions on and move forward with you know, in the coming months here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And we still have a lot of openings, a lot of part-time openings. If you know any teenagers or college students that need some jobs, we have them, like everybody. Um, I think that was so, um, anyone else? So just want to remind everyone, the administration building is closed on July second and fifth. We do not have a study session scheduled for next week or the following week. But we are closed the second and the fifth. We will post that on our doors also, and I think it's in the focus and on our webpage also. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move. I can.
Thank you. Clark Seagres, please take roll call on the motion.
Orinsky.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham. Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
And I.
Thank you. We are adjourning and everyone have a great fourth.